Bruce?
Where'd he go?
Probably the bathroom. Okay. James Golden? Well, you guys got to put them in order then. Jack?
Yes.
All right. Jack Kirschenbaum, say your name, please.
Okay. Madam Chairman, Commissioners, my name's Jack Kirschenbaum. I'm with the law firm of Gray Robinson. I've been in Brevard County since 1957, and I know this land pretty well because I was involved in the legal team that condemned it from Deseret back in the olden days. First of all, let me make two points that were not on my presentation. One, Florida, I represent Florida Recyclers, of course, and Florida Recyclers does real well selling mulch, and we might be able to help on that side of the coin. And so that's certainly something we can talk about in the future. Second, we are looking forward to the environmental testing. Mr. Golden with Grove Scientific will help and work with the engineers and testing company that Mr. Rodriguez is sending out to us, and we will be 100% cooperative and work on that project together. Lastly, appraisals are like noses. Everybody's got one. There are opinions, and they used, if you looked at them closely, different methodologies in determining value. And Ms. Bentley is an expert eminent domain lawyer, and we've had these arguments before in court cases. Appraisals set parameters, and we are happy to work with you and your team and talk. And that brings me to my presentation. We are requesting that the commission not do anything that limits and forecloses your options. Something occurred to me this morning. I was, on Sunday afternoon, I took all my yard waste out to the curb. On Monday, I took the garbage out to the curb. And today, I started recycling all the cans and bottles and cardboard boxes. And I would suggest to you that you make big decisions, important decisions, every time you come to a meeting. But I'd suggest that no decision you make affects more people, residents and visitors, more often, daily or more than daily, longer, for more years than this decision you're making about solid waste and what to do with these options that you have. And therefore, this is a huge decision. Like a real estate issue, it's got land issues and locations important. Like a business decision, it has business considerations of timing and environmental factors, and it requires experts. And we've brought two today to talk about that. We have Jim Golden from Grove Scientific, and you know Bruce Moyer. We have environmental issues to convince you that we have the best site for the taxpayer. We have location issues that will convince you this is the best site for the taxpayers. And we think that when it's in conclusion, you'll say, we have an opportunity to talk and do the right thing for the taxpayers.
Thank you.
I have some handouts that will, Mr. Golden will have a presentation. And who should I give them to?
Sit him up if you'd like.
Sure. Thank you.
It's a big stack.
Morning, Madam Chairman and Commissioner. My name's James Golden with Grove Scientific and Engineering in Orlando, Florida. Here today to give a brief presentation about the Florida recyclers of Brevard, construction and demolition debris landfill. It's very centrally located in Brevard County. If you all know, of course, where Sarno Road is and right adjacent to your other solid waste facilities. So that's where you really, the best place for a solid waste disposal facility, if you can ever achieve that, and to make it a good neighbor to the community. Florida Recyclers landfill has been operating for over 20 years now, and they're really running a good facility there. It's surrounded on three sides by Brevard County properties. Your transfer station to the west, Sarno Road landfill to the south, and the northeast parcel to the east. So it's uniquely located to provide an expansion for the Sarno Road landfill. You've already heard from your solid waste director, Mr. Rodriguez, about the different options to solve your Class 1, I mean, your Class 3 waste disposal problem. Now, the Sarno Road landfill is going to be full about 2024. And these are information from your own reports, but I just wanted to point out that Class, I mean, Option 1 is really going to use up Class 1 landfill space, which is very valuable. Option 2 is not the best site to develop without our parcel first. Option 3, we're Option 3. We have a lot of landfill space remaining. We can provide 10 years of life with the 80-foot elevation. We can provide another nine years of life with the valley between, like Jack's graphic shows here, between the two landfills. And it can be a quick turnaround time, two years or less, to give you that space for Class 3 disposal. And we've already heard about number four developed, the US 192 property, where that's a brand-new landfill with new impacts. So we believe we're the best option. 45 acres, initial expansion, 79 acres ultimately could be expanded into, for Class 3 disposal at this location. Here's a map showing that. Where the purple area in the middle is the valley infills between the two landfills that you could have, one on our property and one on the northeast parcel. So it'll give you 47 years of space if you go with this concept design. Finally, we believe we are also the lowest-cost option, even though Yuri's staff did an excellent job of trying to do apples-to-apples for this very complex problem. We did our own evaluation. We do think we're the lowest-cost option also, but obviously, there needs to be more study into that, so.
All right.
That's the end of my presentation, and I'm here for questions.
Okay. We'll call you back up if we need you. Bruce Moyer?
Good morning again, Bruce Moyer, Malibu, Florida. Thank you for the opportunity to present. I'm here to basically present why this is a good option in an environmental perspective. So our understanding, based on some information that was provided to the DEP, is that this property on 192 has the potential to impact 197 acres of wetlands. And also, there were 13 threatened or endangered species that have been observed on the site that could also be impacted. And that is, it would be a 30-mile round trip from the transfer station to the site, so that's a lot of exhaust and greenhouse gases. And it's also, I think, what's most important, it's located in the St. John's River Basin. I don't know a lot about landfills. I think what I do know is that landfills are lined. But what I've learned recently is that all landfills leak, all liners leak. They all do. So here we are next to the Lake Washington, which is the drinking water supply for the city of Malibu, which provides water from basically Pineda all the way south, excluding Palm Bay and Miko. And you would have a landfill leaking potentially material into the groundwater that could potentially have a devastating effect on our drinking water supply. So I think that's pretty important. I did a Google Street View of this. It's pretty flat out there. You can see everything from the road. There's not a lot of trees, and there's not a lot of elevation. This potentially could be a 280-foot landfill. That's pretty tall. That's about, I think you could probably see, if it was a 28-story building, you could see that from miles, miles away. So this would be a visual, a really bad visual impact for anybody coming to Brevard County, because it would be the gateway to Brevard County from 192. You know, not even to even talk about what impact it might have on any neighboring properties that would want to develop next to a landfill. So I think, from an environmental perspective, I think that this going to 192 is not really that good of an option, that a better option would be to go right next to the landfill that you already have. So thank you.
Thank you. That's all the cards I have. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've been listening to these arguments pro and con now for five years, and I'm as committed as ever to the fact that I believe going forward that we have to develop 192. We just saw a picture up here that was just presented of the Sarno landfill, and it's surrounded by homes, condos, even a daycare center. All those homes, daycare center, condo, they would be, they would be part and parcel of the big problem I'm hearing in that a lot of people would be affected. They'd be affected by the noise, they'd be affected by the activity, they'd be affected by the potential smell of increasing Sarno landfill. And there's an awful lot of unknowns with the Sarno landfill that we just don't know, particularly what the environmental assessment would be of that property. And if we bought it, we inherit that. So I believe we need to sign the Army Corps permit. I know Yuri keeps saying that there is no hurry, but I've done some research, and there really kind of is hurry, because we don't know what future regulations and restrictions are going to come down the road. And we know that this is very, very difficult. This is a very difficult path to follow, because, and the perfect evidence of that is it's taken us 30 years, as our chair has mentioned. This isn't something that you can just flip a switch and say, okay, we're going to open up a landfill. So if we get to the point where we're three or five years out of filling up these other landfills that we have, we can't flip that switch and say, okay, well, then we're going to open up 192 in five years. We may not be able to sign the permit, because there may be changes that come down the road. And I think that's a pretty fair assessment, that there would be changes coming down the road that would require us to start some of this process over again. And I think that where we are right now with the 192 landfill, you're only talking about two tenants out there, and you're talking about tens of thousands of acres. So you're not impacting people like you would with Sarno. I think the big thing for me is it secures Brevard's future, because it locks us in with note without any further cost. And as I mentioned already, it would avoid any future changes in regulations and rules. But the future that we're looking at, if we don't have this landfill, we're selling the future of our citizens, our constituents, down the road. We're selling them down the river, because without a landfill, we're at the mercy of market conditions, because we would have to ship our refuse out of county. And who's going to accept it, and at what cost? We're not in the driver's seat at that point in time. I think it behooves us as a commission to understand that we don't know whether this is going to happen in three years or that's going to happen in 15 years. We just don't know. So if we secure this purchase, we've locked that in so that future commissioners that are sitting here 10 and 15 years from now, when they all have all the answers, they won't be speculating, they can make the decision whether to go forward with the Sarno, with the 192 landfill or not. And for me, that's really the key, securing the future and not putting the burden of our future commissioners and our future citizens at risk, because you could be talking about hundreds of millions of dollars a year. Well, maybe not a year. Yuri, you had mentioned one time that we had done some kind of a survey or tried to figure out what it would cost us to ship this stuff out, did you not?
There was one time, and we did a cost analysis between developing 192 and shipping it off to the JED facility over in Osceola County. And there was, I believe at that time, it was about $100 million to ship it over there, spread out through, I believe, 20 years.
Okay.
And then our, the option of 192 at that point in time is like, you see in the reports, it's around 60-some-odd million dollars for the same period of time. So it would have been, according to those numbers, a savings of around 36 million.
Which is significant in any, in any period. We don't know what inflation is going to do, but I don't think $36 million is going to be chump change even 20 years from now. Madam Chair, I'd like to call up David D., because he's been working with the county for an awful long time, and I want to ask him what the significance of...
He probably should have filled out a card like everybody else did. I mean, otherwise, I'm going to call up Sandra Sullivan, and she can talk about the impacts of damage to... Okay.
And my question is, this has taken a long, long time.
Can I get your name and address, please, for the record?
Yes, of course. I'm David D. My address is 1300 Thomas Wood Drive in Tallahassee, Florida. I've been hired as outside counsel for the county. I've worked on this project since 1992, off and on, as the county has decided to move forward with it. I've got 40 years of experience working on environmental law projects around Florida, and I've probably worked on more landfill projects than any other attorney in Florida. I've permitted the JED landfill over in Osceola County, among others. Yes, sir, Mr. Smith?
Well, my question is, it's taken 30 years. You've been working on it for 30 years. And as I mentioned, it's not something we can just flip a switch and buy another piece of property, or flip a switch and turn 192 into a landfill. And so if you could explain some of that and the reasons behind it.
Commissioner, I've worked with 28 different counties around Florida on solid waste projects and about a dozen of the cities. My fear throughout my career has been that there would be monopolies on the disposal of solid waste, and local governments would be left to market conditions, having to pay whatever, whatever they had to pay wherever they could get it. In this case, I've been impressed with the county, because long ago, they started looking at alternatives and made long-term plans, both at Central and also for the southern part of the county. Based on my experience and having struggled through many hearings to try and cite facilities like this one, which are unpopular, undesirable, hard to find suitable locations for them, this site always struck me as being an excellent opportunity for the long-range future of this county, because it gives you enough property that you can have large buffers on your property, so you're not adversely affecting your neighbors. You've got enough space on the property, so you can provide for a recycling facility there in the future. You could provide for the use of innovative technologies. You could provide for waste to energy. You could have a landfill there to receive the ash from a waste-energy facility. And parenthetically, your neighbors, Deer Park and Desrae Ranch, have stipulated that they would not object if you wanted to do a recycling facility, a waste-energy facility, or an innovative technology out on that site. You've already compensated them for the purchase of their property. You've compensated them for the secondary impacts on their property. Indeed, you paid richly to get the site in the first place. Out there, you have cattle and not much else as your neighbors. You're not impacting on people. You've got a 3,700-foot setback from the highway, so you've got plenty of room for visual buffer. You've got a large visual buffer on the west side of the property, an existing forested wetland. You've got, from the proposed Class 3 landfill, you've got your setback about 4,000 feet from the east, so you've got lots of room to minimize impacts on your neighbors. I understand the concerns about wetlands and wildlife. Those have all been thoroughly reviewed by the regulatory agencies. Both the DEP and the US Army Corps of Engineers and US Fish and Wildlife Service have all reviewed and approved those plans and approved those impacts. The DEP, on the wetland review, determined that this facility was clearly in the public interest. The US Army Corps of Engineers, after reviewing the wetland and wildlife impact, said that this project more than sufficiently provided, offset the impacts of that site. The best wetlands are going to be preserved, the best environmental areas are going to be preserved. But from my perspective, you've got an historic opportunity here to continue the work that was started decades ago by people that sat in the same chairs that you're in today. They recognize the need to provide for their long-term solid waste disposal.
Okay, I didn't allow these guys to have, like, a long presentation. They had three minutes, so I'm trying to be fair, because since he's arguing your point. Can I just have a question?
Yes, ma'am.
You've been working for the county since 1992?
Off and on.
Off and on? Okay. So your interest is obviously with the county?
My work's done.
Your work's done? So you've probably made a significant amount of money from the county doing legal work?
I did.
And would you say that most of your time spent over these last 25 to 30 years has been in litigation with Desrae Ranch over the property?
No, ma'am, not at all.
Maybe not for you?
Not at all.
Okay.
No.
All right, I don't have any other questions. Does anybody else have questions for him? Commissioner Loeb?
No, not, not for him. I was actually just getting on to address it after everyone gets through the public comment.
Commissioner Twyler, do you have questions for the attorney?
Thank you.
From Tallahassee?
Yes. I know, I looked up, but he went to Emory as an undergrad, so, yeah.
Yes, sir, I did.
Can you, you've worked and permitted more, out of curiosity, and I should never ask a question and don't know the answer to, but have you, have you ever had a commission not sign a permit like this in all the time that you've ever worked?
No, I'm stunned that we're at this position, because in this situation, you don't have nearly as much time as you think. You've got five years of capacity, if you can afford with Sarno under the current height variance that you got. But one good hurricane wipes out a lot of that capacity. If Dorian had hit this county the way it was supposed to, their spare capacity would be gone. You would not be able to get Sarno up and op, or excuse me, you would not be able to get 192 up and operational in time to meet your needs. So you were very fortunate this year, but saying that it's going to take three years to 192 up and operational doesn't really account for the variabilities that could affect your capacity at Sarno.
And just a quick follow-up, but going off of what the chairwoman said. You, I imagine you get paid a fee by hour?
Yes, sir.
So it would actually benefit you to carry this on another 30 years?
Yes, sir.
But your, your opinion, though it would cut directly against your financial interest, would be to sign this, is that correct?
Yes, sir, because if you don't sign this and move forward, you're going to have to renew those permits. You've got a big site. Every time there's a change in regulations, you've got to do an extraordinary amount of work to go out and evaluate the site, respond to those conditions, prepare new applications. You've spent millions of dollars to get to where you are. That money will be not wasted, but there will be additional substantial expenses you're going to incur if you don't go forward now.
Yeah, real, how did you get here?
I drove down.
Did you charge the county per mile?
Yeah.
And just, you know, just, just pointing, just pointing this out, real dollars. So if we do this again, there's another cost incurred to bring you down here again?
Sure.
But you said your work is done. I'm curious as to why we're paying this attorney to still come if his work is done?
Because you haven't signed the permit. That permit was issued in April or March rather.
Right, but what is your interest in us signing the permit, other than the fact that you've said you've done your job already and you were done?
I'm here to advise the commission to make sure that they make an informed decision.
But I know I didn't hire you. Maybe the county hired you, but I know I didn't hire you. Obviously, Commissioner Smith knew you were here to call you up, but obviously, I wouldn't agree if it was up to me to pay you to be here if your job was finished.
I understand.
I mean, I'm just saying, if you're, if you're talking about him being here, he's not here because the commission asked him to be here. He's here possibly because staff asked him to be here. But I know I don't obviously care that he's here. Commissioner Loeb?
Just a quick question on perhaps a similar vein here. Is there anything that you're doing or you intend to do in the near future or intermediate future with respect to this that requires a license to practice law? Or is this just lobbying? I'm just, because it sounds like what you're saying might be better coming from an engineer or someone that's a subject matter expert, and I'm just trying to understand why we have, nothing against attorneys, I'm one myself, my wife is, my dad is, my father-in-law is, my brother is, my sister-in-law is, I keep going. But why do we have an attorney here telling us what might be more appropriate coming from an engineer?
I have a lot of history on this project, and I'm happy to convey to you my professional opinion based on my experience working throughout the state of Florida. If you choose to ignore that, that's certainly an option.
No, I don't want to ignore it, I just want to understand why we have you instead of someone else here. And I'm not trying to take away from your experience by any means. I'm sure you know much more about this than I do. I'll give you that, I'm just, I'm curious.
I was asked by Mr. Smith to advise you about the status of the permits.
Thank you.
So I've tried to do that.
Commissioner Bridget?
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you caught my attention with something for emergency. Let me, Yuri, if we permit, it doesn't mean we have to build on this.
No, ma'am, you can get all the permits that you needed. If you don't build...
We're talking about the Army Corps permit that's about to expire? No.
That's not to expire.
Okay.
It needs to be signed, and the county needs it.
And it'll, it'll change, see, here's my dilemma. I have no intentions of doing anything on 192. We run into a critical situation. What are the alternatives? And at Sarno, we've got some time, and please understand, I'm probably going to move forward with trying to figure out the Florida recyclers. I need more, I'm going to need more data on this. But if we just sign a permit for an emergency, I don't know, I'm starting to, like, think about what we need to do with this, but please understand, I have no intention of messing with 192 unless we have a real emergency. But I need to know, Yuri, if we did have a hurricane, what would that do to Sarno? And then what type of an emergency situation would we be in? Is it possible to overflow to the other options? I mean, I, you just brought up a very good question now, and so...
Commissioner, let me try to address that one. The option, as it relates to the Central Facility, if you ran into emergency, you still have that option, which is a transportation option. What you'll see there, even in our report, is that that is a significantly more expensive option than any of the others that would be there. So you have less expensive options, as contained in the beginning of that agenda report under the fiscal impact statement. So what you're hearing here is that if you were to go to the longest-term, less, least-expensive option, that would be the one that, from what staff has submitted, would be the 192 option, that you are avoiding the more significant cost if there was that kind of emergency than choosing any of the other options. Now, if you started, you know, those other three options, which include Florida Recycle, the purchase of that, or the northeast quadrant and trying to get that permitted, and the height variance, similar to what we have, you know, those are two other options, but you still have the option of utilizing some of the Cocoa Facility, which is the Class 1. That's not the best option for some of the reasons you've heard earlier about using a Class 1 instead of, you know, putting Class 3 into a Class 1, which would not be the more cost-effective option, but those are still options that are available to the board.
County manager, what is the harm of waiting another year to discuss signing the permit?
The challenge is if we do not have the kind of emergency that was described, if you do not have additional pressure on the capacity at Sarno, if you have four years of life, Yuri believes that with what is needed to be done with the remaining permits that we have to have, the remaining build of the churning lane, the driveway, the environmental mitigation that needs to occur, the putting up of the fence, and then to start the construction after that, that that is at least a three-year process. And so when you start looking that we're going into 2020, and it's going to reach capacity at 2024, that you're under that scenario, assuming that you don't have any additional pressure. And the one factor that I think we all want to reemphasize is that, you know, the timeframe for how much life you have left in the facility is an estimate. It's the best professional estimate that we can get. And I'd ask Yuri if I've missed any points on that that, you know, we should add.
What's the problem with signing the permit if we have no intention to use it as a landfill?
There is no problem, ma'am. This board can just authorize the signature of it and doesn't, and can direct staff to any other actions that are taken on the site that the board, that staff has to seek individual authorization for.
So we could sign the permit and still just do nothing? Continue forward with our other... So we, we, we could sign the permit and still just do nothing? And continue forward with our other prospects of?
That's correct, ma'am.
Then why would we sign it if we had no intention of doing anything else but sign it? Like, what would be the purpose of signing it?
It increases your options, so that you're not stuck behind.
But if we're not doing anything, if we're not moving forward and we're not making any movement, then why sign it? I mean, if we're not building on the land and...
Because it secures, it does secure the future, because if regulations change, then we're locked in. If regulations change, we're not locked in, and now we have to start to process and more money, spending more money.
But that can happen with anything that we do, just like a hurricane.
Right, so that's why if we sign it, then we've secured our future. And if some future board in five or 10 or 15 years decides we don't need it, they can, they can sell it.
Right.
And they'll have, like I say, my point is, they'll have all the information. All these hypotheticals won't exist at that point. They'll know, yes, we do need it, or no, we don't need it.
Well, you've made your position pretty clear that you want to move forward with building on 192 anyway.
No, I want to secure that we don't have to worry about it.
But I wonder if you'd feel the same way if this was in Viera? Because this is my district, and I know that it's hard to be sympathetic.
Well, Viera's, well, it's too, it's like apples and oranges.
Of course it would be ridiculous. I don't, I don't want a landfill anywhere. But what I'm saying is, is obviously this doesn't impact you or your district. This impacts me and my district.
Well, how much impact would it be on your district? There's no people, nobody lives out there.
Huge impact. They're doing the east center Florida coast, they're, it's going to, the very first meeting I had with staff about this landfill was, what do I care anyway? Because it's, they're going to build on it anyway. That was the response I got from county staff. That was the very first meeting I had regarding this landfill. So it's less about, it's, it's more about the future. You talk about the future, you talk about selling, you know, residents down the river. I mean, I think polluting the river, any risk at all, any risk to the environment at all, and you can't predict the future. You can talk about it, and I've seen DEP and Army Corps permits come out for things that just scratch the head, because everything is political, or you wouldn't be here. You wouldn't have this job in Tallahassee on behalf of these cities and municipalities. But I think we need to be doing everything in our power not to do another landfill.
I agree. And, but this, this gives us the option if we have to. That's the key. For me, that's the key.
But if we don't, if we told the county, there is no other option, we are not doing this, then we would find a way. And if you don't think technology's going to be ready in 20 years, then we're all dumb, because that would be foolish.
Well, and that's, that's the whole thing. This gives you, as he mentioned, David, you can sit down.
But I'll tell you, I'd rather, I'd rather pay two extra dollars a month than, than put another footprint for a landfill and risk the environment. And, I mean, you could talk wetlands and endangered species too, if you want to get all environmentalist, but I'm telling you, the entrance to our county, that is the entrance to our county. And a landfill there, I don't care what you do to try to disguise it, you're not going to disguise it. Now, it may not be the entrance to District, to District 4, but it is the entrance to our county from, from the middle of the state. So I will never support this. I will never...
But you're supporting a, increasing the size of the landfill in a populated area on Sarno Road.
But it's already, it's already a landfill. It's already a landfill.
Yeah, but it's not obtrusive at this point.
It is, yes it is. I mean, it is. I mean, it is what it is. It's already there, it's already permitted. I think it's foolish not to use it, because we know...
So you've got tens of thousands of acres out there, and that's going to be a problem. I, I understand what you're saying, and you're very passionate, but I respectfully do not agree with you.
That's okay. You don't have to agree with me.
And I know. And, and I don't have to agree with you, so we're good there.
Right.
So my point is the same. We sign the permit, we secure our future, and if it sits and we don't need it, a future commission, knowing all the details, they can make a decision at that point in time. We're not, we're not taking that decision-making ability away from them. If we don't do anything with this, we've sold our county down the river for the future.
I'd rather...
I say, let's, let the future commissions have the ability to say yes or no.
And I think waiting for, waiting for all of the information to come back on the environmental study, which is something else I'll talk about too, I think that should be independent. And so there is no question about it being an independent study. We do an environmental study and a feasibility study on the use of that land, and then we know our options. Waiting a few months, if waiting a few months is going to change the future of the county for, in 30 years, then we've got bigger problems. Because I don't, and I think we're, we're being reckless, making a rash decision, because you know and I know, once we sign that permit, it's all over. So, I mean, I, I don't mean to keep talking with you guys when you talk, it's just waiting till the end of talk is almost impossible to have a conversation or dialogue. And I obviously am very impassioned, because this is my district. And I know this impacts all of us, and we're all commissioners, and it all matters, but this is my district, and this is something that I just, I scratch my head that I don't have 30 speaker cards on this issue. Especially because our agenda's out, and people get upset about the silliest things sometimes, but this is a big deal. So, anyway, I'm done. Commissioner Loeb?
I have a few thoughts, and I apologize if any of this is repetitious at all. I'm not trying to be. I think, Commissioner Pritchett, the concern that I have with respect to signing the, the permit is, it's irreversible. If we sign that permit, I'm not a betting man, but if I had to bet, I would be relatively comfortable saying we will have a landfill there if we sign the permit. I really believe that. As far as buffering is concerned, I know between your district and mine, Commissioner Pritchett, we have one of Florida's few mountains, Mount Cocoa. And I, I don't trust that, and I, I'm not saying that I don't trust the county to do the best job that's possible, but I don't trust that it is possible to fully buffer a landfill. I don't think that's something that, that realistically is possible, unless you keep it so short that you're really not getting the useful life that, that would justify putting it there in the first place. As far as your concern over an emergency situation, I, I appreciate that concern. What I would tell you, though, is our fallback, if we elect not to go with any of these options, which I think is a horrible decision, but if we go with none of the options that have been presented, we pay to ship it. It's expensive. But if we have a situation that puts us, let's say, three months behind schedule, it's not the end of the world. It's not, you know, a biblical plague on Brevard County. If we have to pay to ship it for a few months, it's something I don't want the county to have to incur, and if we know what we're doing, we should move forward. But due diligence has a cost. Before I bought the property that I built my house on, I had universal engineering go out and do soil borings, I had an appraisal done. With this, we're doing the environmental study. We're, we're doing things that we ought to be doing, but due diligence has a cost. And I think that it's worth spending the money and being certain as to what we're doing. And in this case, it's a hypothetical, a part of it's a hypothetical cost, because we don't know that we're going to have an emergency. But if we do, it's not that the, the trash is going to pile up in people's homes. It's, it's going to be expensive for us to ship it for a short period of time, if that comes to pass, which it may well not. But I think that's the cost of doing our due diligence.
Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Commissioner Pritchett, this squarely falls on your shoulders here. I think it's very apparent that where the four of us stand. Let me give you an alternative position that wasn't advocated by Commissioner Smith, though I do greatly agree with where he stands on this. And I'm not opposed to Florida Recycles. Absolutely, I'm not opposed to it. But we need to have a little leverage. Right now, we have absolutely no leverage, and they gave us back one of the most ridiculous reports. They, they claimed the land is worth eight and a half million dollars. They claimed that there's value in mulch, something we have to pay to get rid of. It's worth $8 million. If we do that environmental study, Yuri's wrong. Yuri's really wrong. If we dig down and we find $3 million of gold down there, it's worth $8 million bucks. But I have a feeling there's not going to be a gold mine down there. I have a feeling there's not going to be an oil mine down there. But I'm not opposed to, I'm not opposed to going forward with that, but I think we need to let these folks know that we have a real opportunity to go in a direction. I'm not advocating going in that direction. I don't think Commissioner Smith is advocating in going in that direction. But right now, we have the option of putting a signature on something that can benefit taxpayers to the tune, to the tune of $10 to $12 million, a signature. I, I thought before this meeting we had to pay $10,000. I was almost willing to stroke a check in order to, to, to do that. But the reality of the situation is, I'm not advocating going forward with the landfill. I'm just advocating that we have a little bit of leverage when we deal with Florida Recycles, because what we have right now is a valuation that is almost double of what our consultants are, are telling us. We have an attorney up here who is going against his own financial benefit. He's getting paid per hour, and he's telling us, sign this thing so I don't have to come back down here. So, I mean, I, I'll...
I doubt that's how that went down, but...
I'm sure, we can ask him. I'm sure he doesn't want to show his face here. I, I'm sure he, he does not want to be here again, though. I mean, that's what, that's what it sounds like. But, but that being said, I, I'd ask, you know, if Commissioner Smith would make the motion, I certainly would.
I think there's a motion already on the table, I think, about to sign it. Could you, could you make the motion?
Uh, no, I believe that was on the prior item with the technology to reject that.
I'm sorry.
But, okay, just, if Commissioners Nardi's mentioned about technology, gosh, I really hope the technology works, but we put a solid wage emerging technologies RFP out, and we got one item back, and it was severely deficient. So right now, that doesn't exist. All this does is give us an option as we move forward with, with Florida recyclers. So again, this comes down, Commissioner Pritchett, squarely, this comes down to you. We've punted this once before. We have Yuri, Yuri Rodriguez telling us that the further we punt this, the more... No, I don't, I don't, I don't, I, his job will be here either way. I, I, you know, I, I don't believe he's biased one way or another. I mean, he's done a pretty fair analysis here. I'm just asking that when we go into negotiations, because it sounds like we were, will, and I'm not opposed to going into negotiations with Florida Recycles, but at least we have a little leverage. All the signature does is provide us with like leverage. Commissioner Loeb mentioned that we build a, a landfill out there. No, the signature does not do that. All it does is provide us with leverage. Right now, I would not vote to, to support going forward with that landfill until we went through a fair negotiations with Florida Recycles. So I, I, you know, I, I certainly hope we get your support, but Commissioner Pritchett, hate to do it, this really falls on your shoulders at this point.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Concerns me, that made a lot of sense. But let me ask, let me ask a question, County Manager. If we do sign the permit, we can remove the permit too, can't we? Can't we just nullify it later and, and do a resolution that we're removing the permit?
I believe the answer is, you don't have to act on it. I don't know that you've actually removed the permit.
Can we do something to make it have to, like, say, we, we get to where we want to go, we decide we put this in place, like Commissioner Tobias said, to use for leverage, and then we come along later and say, we, can we want to remove that permit, just so that we're not at risk of future commissions having such an easy time trying to develop a landfill without doing due diligence?
From a legal perspective, I don't know what the answer to that is. I'd have to ask county attorney on that.
Yeah, I think we need to ask Mr. D how you abandon a, a permit or terminate a permit of this type. I don't have that level of expertise on this type of permit.
You could simply notify the agencies that you're abandoning the permit, or you could simply not act on the permit. You could decide not to go forward. Either one would suffice.
So if, if we get to a place in about a year or so where we decide this is not the option we want to go to, because, please, I, I, you know what? I do not want to sell 192. It's our property now, and I, I just don't want to sell it. But neither do I, here's a thought. Okay, like you said, this is a good location for on, for, for a landfill. It's limited resources. But I do not want to open another landfill in Brevard County. Neither do I want to ship it out of the county. I actually watched that commission meeting years ago and listened to the all-day-long negotiations that we made with Desiree, and, and I, I agree with you, Commissioner Nardi. They finally just got worn down and, and agreed to a different class. But here's the, the thing is, is I know, I guess I shouldn't have said, I'm really looking forward to working out something with Florida Recycles, because I do agree with Commissioner Tobias that the delta there is so large that I am a little bit uncomfortable with it too. And then I was joking around with Chief Scholmeyer, if he would just go and set all the mulch on fire, it would kind of take care of the million-dollar problem. And he said he would charge us to put it right back out after he, he torched it. So there, there is a real cost we still got to look at with that. And, and you're right, Commissioner Tobias, I think we do need to do negotiations. So I, I, I think, other than, I was going to say we need to, you know, put this off for a little bit longer. So I, I would like to hear some more comment, or either just table this to the very next meeting, because Commissioner Tobias brought up a really good point, because if we completely shut down all options, we have no negotiation tools with Florida recyclers, because that's really our open idea. Because I would love to see us go Sarno an extra four, Florida Recycles eight, and then another three or four with the expansion. We've already taken care of another 15 and probably forever years, and, because I think technology has to catch up. So whether or not we sign a permit, I'm telling you right now, and I, I plan on being here for another five years, I'm not going to vote to build on it, and my, my idea would be, after we get this in place, if, if I do agree to permit, and that we go ahead and we remove the permit, let somebody else have to deal with that later down the road. So Commissioner Tobias, you brought up a really good point there, and I wish I... I don't know, that's kind of where I'm hanging right now. But this is the truth. I do not plan on building on 192. But as far as a, a, an option here to bring in negotiations, I, I really do understand that. And if you guys will drop your price in half, I think this conversation would be over right now. But I do get that from trying to shop sales in, in stores, how the art of negotiation works. And I think Mr. Loeb is wanting to speak really bad.
Yeah.
Commissioner Loeb?
Kind of flailing over here a little. So two things. One, the leverage, I think, already exists.
Right.
We can, we can take a pen, I don't know if it has to be blue, probably black or any color will work.
Blue.
Do this. She can do it, I can do it, and it's done. I'll just tell you and I'll put it flat out there. If you guys are unreasonable and inflexible with the price, she doesn't want to sign it, I'll sign it. I don't care. You know, I have no problem signing a permit if, if that's our best option. I just want to make sure that's our best option. I, I don't normally ask folks to go and bid against themselves, but your, your estimate, your appraisal, was way, way too high. I would suggest maybe before we even come back with another number, that you all maybe reconsider the number that you're at, and really where you see it ending, because I, I know when you're dealing with negotiations, oftentimes people will throw out a first offer figuring that they're going to get lowballed and you'll meet somewhere in the middle, or they have all this gamesmanship that goes into negotiating. I think if you guys get a lot closer to where you see it ending realistically, that, that would probably help all involved and increase the chance you're going to make something on the land, much more than you otherwise might. I just, I think the number is, it's, it's, it's beginning with the wrong digit. I mean, it's, it's substantially off. It's not as off as something beginning with, or having too many digits, but it's, it's still, it's, it's just not in the ballpark. I would say as far as the process of abandoning or terminating the permit, I wouldn't ever worry about what the process is, because we will never do it. And in fact, once we sign the permit, I don't think I would be okay abandoning it, because at that point, I mean, it's, it's there. And if, if we're already that invested in it, I, I just see that being an irreversible step. I just, I, again, I have no problem signing it down the road if that's the best option, but I, I'm far from convinced, until we have all the options on the table, that that's really where we're at at this point. So, you know, I'm, if Commissioner Pritchett wants to make a motion to continue this out so that we can get some more info, or she can get more info, I'm happy to second that. I would support that. I just, I think the worst thing we can do, regardless of what the end result is, is rush it now, because we're, we're under this artificial pressure over something that, that's prospective that may never come to pass. And if it does come to pass, it's not the end of the world either. It just costs us not $10 million, $50 million more. We're talking about something for a short period of time.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Did my light not come on?
No.
You have to push the top button.
I did push the top button while he was talking.
You probably hit the mic.
Okay, do you want him to go first then?
Go ahead, Commissioner Smith.
Okay, well, I think Commissioner Pritchett nailed it. If you can get 12 or 15 years out of this, then 192 doesn't even come into the picture. If in 15 or 20 years, as we all think, that we're going to have technology available, then we can put a recycling plant out on 192. And that solves our problem forever and ever. Signing it, whether you sign it today, or you sign it next month, or sign it four months from now, the only risk that we run is that if regulations and rules change, then it's going to cost us more money than if we sign it now.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Here's, here's what I'm thinking, and you guys jump in if, if you've got a different idea. I, I would like to get the study back from the Sarno Road still. And I would like to get real costs, and I would like for a real proposal to come in. And I'm, I'm not real sure having this discussion in three months will make a real big difference as far as whether to permit. But if we can get some kind of negotiation here that's competitive, then I'm, I'm probably thinking, I mean, because Commissioner Tobias really got my attention, because I do understand that art of negotiation. I think at the end of that time period, if, if we're not there with getting some competitive, that we probably should move forward with a permit. a permit. And then we can withdraw the permit. Commissioner Loebur, I bet I can talk you into withdrawing it if we get to a place that's stable after that. But, I think that's what I'm thinking right now, is to have this discussion again in about three months to see where we are with the recyclers in moving forward with these options. And if we can get you all to sharpen up your pencils a little bit, because I think Commissioner Tobias also brought up a good point, that delta is way too big. And there are costs we're going to have to do to get this ready to use. But, the good thing is, is the height restrictions are going to be a little bit better there, too. So, we're probably going to get even more years than we have on here. So, I think this could be a real win-win. So, I just want to throw that out. And so, I do want to thank you for your time. I don't know the attorney's name, but thank you for all your time, sir, and the investment that you put in this. You've given us some good information. So, I think we're going to be able to make some good decisions moving forward. So, that's what I think that I'd be comfortable with today, but I still, whatever you guys want to talk about still.
You guys know where I stand. I mean, rather than go through my daily landfill rant, I'll just stick with this. I mean, I think I would like to obviously see where the study, what the environmental study says. But, I want an independent agency. I don't want our consultant, our agency, to study. I don't want their agent, environmental agency to study. I want an independent agency. I don't know how we go about that. But, it takes all bias and all...
Ma'am, let me clarify, and you can tell me whether this is going to be independent or not. The people that are doing this are not our normal consultants. They're natural resources consultants. I don't have...
Okay.
My consultants don't specialize in this kind of stuff. Just letting you know.
Right. But, they still work for the county. They still work under county.
Yes, ma'am.
Contract, yeah. So, I want an independent agency that has no vested interest...
Go ahead. I'm listening.
That has zero vested interest in how a study looks. And I'm not saying the county would tell them any which way, but I've been around government long enough to know that independent, fair, equitable. I want it fair for them, and I want it fair for us. So, I don't know what that process takes, if that's going to be done in three months. I just know, I just know the last time we talked about a permit or signing the permit, it was because we wanted to start prepping, not just the turn lane, but, you know, the little bit of the property, as far as I understood, some grading and some drainage.
There was the fencing issue, and there was also the environmental mitigation that needs to happen on the property.
And that's movement on the property that we, I think, at least, at least the majority of the commission said nothing, at least if they were going to go as far as signing.
Do we have to do that if we permit it?
No, that was, but that was the intention of the county, wanting to permit it before. So, again, my gut tells me, don't sign the permit. I don't think there's an urgency. I mean, again, we can go back the 25 years and talk about the urgency of Sarno filling up and the urgency of the land and the many, many years that we spent, you know, fighting Desiree and all that other good stuff. But, and I think, you know, and Commissioner Tobias may have different intentions, but I think the idea is not to have another landfill. So, I know the leverage is there. It's obvious. You guys are aware of the leverage. You know how close this commission is as far as teetering one way or the other. So, I don't think they're going to play games with us, whether or not we sign the permit.
And if, I just want to make sure I understand correctly. So, if the board's asking us to go out on another bid or RFP for an environmental consultant to come in, is that what you're asking for?
Yeah. But, we probably need some parameters to give you.
Well, that's why I'm making the request now, because that's going to change the timeframe, obviously, for us to go through that kind of a process.
And I'm not sure that the county agrees with that, but what I'm saying is, if we're to do our due diligence and to do what's best for the county, not just for...
Right. Well, we'd be seeking board direction on that, because right now, as Yuri said, we have the one coming in. We were planning to have something back to the board 20-something days after the middle of November. But, if you want us to go down another path, if that's what the board wants, we'll be, you know, we're more than willing to follow the board direction.
I don't know. Odds are, they won't want that, but that's what I want.
But, how are you going to hire somebody and not have them be at the county? I mean, they're going to be influenced, because we're going to be paying them.
But, if they bid on it, they're an independent person. They're not somebody that does consulting work for the county already.
Are you saying, put it, put...
Put it out to RFP, and it's not somebody that currently does work for the county.
Right.
That way, it takes all bias out of it, because their environmental study guy is going to be biased, just like ours would be. And that's whether intentional or not, or whether, you know...
I see where you're coming from.
Commissioner Loebur?
All right. I've agreed with you on most of this. I don't agree with you on that. What I'll tell you is, I'd like to see how the existing study comes back. And if there's reason to question it, then I would be happy to expand it out and send it out. But, I think at this point, it may be a little premature to do that. I just don't think there's a gung-ho rush. So, that's where I am. I wouldn't support that. And, you know, beyond that, I think, as far as the situation with Florida recyclers, and I think they've been called probably four different names, Florida Recycles and American Recycles and...
You're getting mixed up with that other company.
Florida recyclers. Florida recyclers of Brevard.
Yes.
Okay.
Getting mixed up with Mike Hazlitt's company.
It's, I'm sorry, that's too many words.
He's American.
But, my thought is, regardless of what happens or doesn't happen with 192, I'd like to explore to see where that really would end up price-wise. So, I would like to go ahead and make a motion, and this doesn't preclude anyone from making another motion with respect to signing or not signing, but I'd like to make a motion to direct the county manager or his designee to negotiate with Florida recyclers of Brevard to try to whittle down to see what the, an acceptable purchase price would be for both parties.
Second for discussion.
And I see Frank kind of...
Motion by Commissioner Loebur, second by Commissioner Pritchett. Commissioner Tobias?
Can I just throw in one question real quick with that? I'm sorry, Commissioner Tobias, I think we almost have to wait for the environmental to come back to do a good negotiation. That was my discussion.
Oh, I don't disagree, but I'm thinking, if they set it up now, having in mind that it's going to come back at a certain date, they can already have on the books a meeting a couple days after.
Sure.
And I would ask that, you know, if the board would want to see things like that mulching issue addressed, as well as closure cost issues, because there, you know, there's, I think there's outstanding issues related to funding for closure and how that would impact the value of the land, which I don't think has been considered yet.
I would intend to give your office wide latitude to include whatever concerns you have. At least, that's what my motion contemplates.
Commissioner Tobias?
I'm usually hesitant to do analogies, but this is like purchasing a car without looking underneath the hood. And now, we have an issue of who's looking underneath the hood. And I don't, I don't know about staff bias. I think that we assume there's staff bias when we get an answer back that doesn't meet our bias. And I understand passion. I, I, I love passion, but it looks like staff is trying to give us the best information we have, or they have possible. You know, this goes one way or another. Yuri doesn't see two more nickels in his paycheck one way or another. Mr. Denninghoff the same, Mr. Abate the same. We talk about bias, but there is no incentivizing an outcome for any staff member here. And, and when we do outside work, those folks are going to get outside work, hopefully, one way or another, if they're, if they're the bidder that wins the project. So, as to that motion, I think there's just too many variables to enter into negotiation until we at least have, as you mentioned, the first report back. But, I to just, as you mentioned previously, to throw off the first report, because there may or may not be bias. I mean, my question would be, what happens if we get the first report back and we find out that there needs to be no mitigation, there needs to be no mitigation or remediation? Will you still want an outside, us to go out there if you get a result that, you know, meets what you're looking for?
Are you asking me a question, or are you done talking?
Yeah, yeah. The question, no, the question is, is, yes, if we get that report back from this bias...
I wasn't talking about staff bias. I was talking about consultant bias.
So, the, so if the consultant comes back and they find out that the remediation, we don't know the drilling's going to happen here, and we find out that there's nothing wrong with it, there's zero on it, will you, zero...
I'm fine with an independent person coming out. I mean, but I have, I have a feeling it's not going to happen that way, because we're already finding reasons why we don't want this property. We've got a long laundry list, if you didn't read that agenda item. So, again, the independence takes bias out. But, it's okay if you don't want to have an independent person that isn't already paid by the county, like that lobbyist that came up earlier. I mean, come on, that's, you telling me that people aren't biased or that consultants aren't biased? You're not, you're not naive, John. I mean, you've been in Tallahassee. I mean, come on.
I have been in Tallahassee. That individual, lobbyists get paid based on results. That individual up there is telling us to sign a document, and it is going to directly cut his pay.
But, he already got his result. It's not going to cut his pay. He said he's done his job.
He got paid hundreds of dollars an hour to drive down here, spend time. He'll get paid hundreds of dollars to drive back. And, and he's telling us, sign this darn thing so I don't have to do that again, so I won't receive that, those hundreds and hundreds of dollars.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Tobias, that's, that's why. He said he was done his job. His job was to help us get the permit, and he finished that. He completed getting the permit. So, he came down here because...
He didn't complete it, because you haven't signed it, so we can't realize a $12 million potential increase to individuals that want the king's ransom, as Commissioner Loebur pretty much put it, for a piece of property that is worth a small fraction of what reality is.
And I don't think anybody here wants to pay a king's ransom. And I don't think anybody here would agree to pay what their suggested appraisal rate is. I mean, I don't even think we're even close to that far yet. But, what I won't agree to is putting out a landfill and having environmental and economical impacts to that area. I think that that's irresponsible. I mean, not, not without looking at this option first. Doesn't mean that they get what they want, but it may actually mean that we don't have another footprint. But, I mean, that's okay. If you want another landfill on 192, because that's what will happen if that's permitted, if that is permitted landfill, we're going to have a private landfill out there, which we will have no control over. So, I mean, they probably run it better than government, but at the same time, I don't, the idea for, at least for me, is not to have a landfill out there.
I get it. And I appreciate it. I love, I absolutely love your passion, and, you know, your opinion's not going to change.
I think you just like disagreeing with me every minute.
My opinion's not going to change. Ultimately, you know, ultimately, this, this comes down to Commissioner Pritchett, and she's been pretty clear on where, well, she wants, it sounds like more time on this to weigh, so...
But, I want more information if it's going to come back. I'd like to actually have, you know, some completed information. You know, it's, I don't want to set a date as much as I do, okay, this is more like a stage, that we've got this information, bring it back. Does that make sense? Rather than give you a date deadline, I'd rather us have some complete information on the environmental study and that kind of stuff.
Well, yeah, the environmental study information we'll, we'll bring back, and we can bring back whatever additional information, like I said, on the closure and the mulch, wherever we are, and that, we can report back on that. I think we've given you about as much complete information as we had outside of those areas.
And so, commission doesn't want to use another, like, an independent consultant? We're going to use the counties?
Not at this point.
Okay. All right. I have a card, but it's a public comment. I guess we allowed the other guy to come up, so me, I'll come up, too. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. I just wanted to ask if you could delay for another meeting and just put that off for another day. But, related to your comment about staff and their consultants, I want to just bring up the dredging to do a compare and contrast here, why I think is a very valid point that you're bringing up. On Friday, at the Save the Lagoon Site Oversight Committee, staff hired a engineering firm, Geotech, with Jim Lockenbach, to come up and speak. And he made a compare and contrast regarding the arsenic, high levels of arsenic, 22.6 milligrams per kilogram at the head of canals. And did a compare and contrast to Montana, which has high levels of arsenic. And then said, the background in Florida is not very high, but that this level was high at those, at those canals. And said, not a problem, because, because, because Montana has high levels of arsenic, so it's not a problem. So, I went home and mentioned it to my husband, and he kind of laughed, because he says, there's two types of arsenic. There is organic arsenic, and then there's inorganic arsenic. Organic arsenic is harmless. Inorganic arsenic, for example, from chemicals, that would be from the chemical disposal site where we live, draining down into the heads canals, which the EPA identified, would be a risk in their 1,400-page report in '92. Inorganic is a Class A carcinogen. Now, he stood up there in front of that group of people, telling them, it's not a problem, because, you know, the levels are high at Montana, so therefore, the high levels here are not a problem. But, he didn't say that there's a difference between organic arsenic and inorganic, and he misled that whole council, because they're not scientists and didn't understand what he was saying. I'm not a scientist. I didn't understand what he was saying. But, I go home and I consult with someone who knows more about this, and I'm told. So, it's very deceptive. And I honestly think there needs to be an investigation. And I've emailed you guys about the red flags that have gone on, and there's actually Professional Board of Engineering complaints that have been filed. So, okay, so I'll just point and say, there is a valid issue. There is red flags going on right now with some of the things that are going on with the internal consultants. And I would encourage you that, to have independent, when there's an issue, as high-profile as this. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, Commissioner Pritchett?
I, I am going to ask that we go ahead and have this discussion again in three months. I probably don't have any problem doing a permit. I have a problem removing the permit. I, I'm telling you right now, I am not going to sign anything moving forward for any construction on the 192 property. I am going to be looking for a fine-line pencil, the recyclers option. And so, I'm going to be looking to see that we're getting some competitive ideas. If not, we can just do the expansion. And if we have to, we'll just bring it up to District Ones until we find another alternative and somebody else willing to bring up another idea. But, just so you know, that, that's not, signing a permit's a piece of paper. I have problems undoing it. And if we do do it, I'm going to want to undo it before I leave office, so that somebody else has to start over. But, I do agree with Commissioner Tobias, it is a little bit of a tool to know that we have not, I don't know, I just, it's like, I shouldn't be saying this publicly, so I'm not going to. Okay. As far as staff, I don't distrust staff, and I don't really distrust consultants, because they're hired to be independent, bring independent information. If you've got one, just because they don't agree with you doesn't mean, and you know what, people just come along saying everybody's dishonorable enough to something. I just, I throw it right out the window. There has to be good information and good resources. And again, Yuri, I asked you a very hard question yesterday, and you told me the absolute truth, got my attention, and I really appreciate it, on the cost per household, per person for these different options. And they're, they're all within a range. It's not too expensive to do different types of options. So, I'm, everything's going to cost, getting rid of the waste is going to cost. But, I know, I'm just, I'm wearing everybody out, and I'm getting a little worn on this, too. So, I would like to bring this back in three months and have the discussion about the permit. Please understand, just signing a permit doesn't give me a lot of heartburn, but I am not going to be agreeing to anything, to any kind of building or constructing on 192. But, then I don't see a hurry to doing a permit, especially if we can get some negotiations that are credible moving forward. So, I think that's where I'm at right now. And so, I think that's what, what I would like to do, Madam Chair. So, I would like to make a motion to bring the discussion of the permit back in three months and to see what the environmental comes back on, because we've already incurred costs to have this study come back, which I think will be good information. And I think that probably some of this information is credible, and I knew it was going to cost more than this. We're just going to have to work through the cost and figure out what to do and how to negotiate it. So, that's where I'm at, Madam Chair.
I'll second that, but I think my motion from earlier is still on the floor.
I didn't know. Oh, that's for the...
To, right, essentially to have the county manager and/or his designee speak with Florida recyclers of Brevard LLC.
I'm always open to that negotiation, anytime. That's...
So, I mean, I'm happy to support yours, too, but I would like to know, even if it ends up being something that we don't pursue, I'd just like to have some ideas in terms of where the numbers are, so that when this comes back in three months, if that's how this goes, we can really have less legwork to do at that point, hopefully very little legwork, to determine what direction the board wants to go.
Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I'm sorry, I'm a little confused. Which motion are we, which motion do we, it sounds like we have two on the table. I'm sorry, I'm confused.
Well, that one just happened. But, Commissioner Loebur had a motion to, to speak with American Recycles.
Okay. So, that's the one we're about, ready to vote on?
Tell Frank to negotiate.
And then, yeah, to allow Frank to speak with them.
Okay.
I think it's just dialogue. I don't think he's looking to, like, try to cut a deal right now.
No, no. And I mean, I would also say, if Commissioner Pritchett wants to be involved in that as well, I don't have any objection to it. I just, I'm going to stay out of it. And I would suggest perhaps all the other commissioners may want to do likewise, but since Commissioner Pritchett's kind of driving the boat in this one, if she has interest in attending, I don't have any objections to it.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm good with Frank coming back with some data, because I know, I know they're feeling our pressure right now and heat, so...
You warm over there?
Commissioner Tobias, did you have anything else?
No, no, Madam Chair, I'm still confused as to which motion we're on at this point.
On my motion to direct the county manager, his designee, to enter into negotiations, not to finalize anything, but just to see where the numbers end up being, so that we have some basis to move forward with really accurate numbers or more accurate numbers when this comes back.
Okay. Okay, is that, is that prior to us receiving the environmental study that may or may not be biased?
No, no, it's, the, the, the motion contemplates the, the first sit-down, if there's more than one, or whether there's one occurring after we have the results, and staff has had some opportunity to review those to, you know, to their satisfaction.
And, and the other points that I raised as well, I'm assuming, right?
Yes, and I would give you, you know, discretion if there's something else that occurs to you between now and then, or, or staff, to, you know, to feel free to include that in negotiations as well.
Sure, I'll support that, but I never have an issue with staff, that's not fair to say, with Mr. Abate doing the legwork to find out all of this stuff, I think he's got the respect of all of us, we understand, you know, that, that he has the, it takes a non-biased opinion, so, you know, I'll, I'll support it, and though I don't think, you know, we need to authorize him to make that determination.
I, I would just think maybe it makes him a little more comfortable, given the, the nature of how this is going.
And I'll have the county attorney by my side, and since she has the expertise in this area.
I don't trust her, though.
Not a good day for attorneys.
Okay, so, you guys should just merge your motions.
You want to just make it one?
But I, I'm a little confused on whether or not you want to sign the permit.
No, I want to come back in three months.
Okay, all right.
You want to just make it all one motion?
Once you do that first, then we'll do the other one.
Were you confused on that?
Okay.
So my, my only issue, can we do it before three months, after, because why wait three months, why not as soon as...
I agree.
As soon as we get the response back from the environmental company, and we provide Frank with the, the ability to enter into that, as soon as he feels comfortable?
I'm, I'm totally good with that, I just thought three months, we shouldn't be in that big of a hurry, so whatever you all want to do is fine.
So, yeah, why don't we address mine first, and then we'll vote on Commissioner Pritchett's?
Okay.
We had a, do we have a second on mine? I think you may have, Mr. Pritchett?
We did, I seconded it, yes.
Okay, did you guys, are you guys following? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
All right, here's no.
Okay, how, how much time would you guys like before we bring this back again for discussion?
I think three months is pretty good.
As soon as they have the information, yeah.
Which might be about three months, it'll be in November, they'll negotiate, you've got the holidays, so...
But if it's sooner or later...
Look, it's going to be probably until mid-December before we have the information, based on what we were just told, so we won't see the report on the environmental until mid-December. So if you gave us the three months, that gets us into the middle of January, toward the middle of January, early February, whatever, whenever that board meeting is, we should be able to be ready by then.
And if it's like, a meeting or two off, it's fine too?
Thank you.
Just approximate.
I mean, if someone else wants to add it as well, if, if the miraculous happens and everything's ready in two weeks, anyone's welcome now into the agenda.
Or a magic, a magic landfill appears somewhere?
That's right.
Okay, we can do it earlier, I'll just make a recommendation, in three months, we bring this back for discussion, first January meeting, or earlier if somebody brings it up, but by, by then it's a discussion.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Loeb, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Amazingly.
I didn't hear anything from Commissioner Tabia.
Good discussion.
It was nice, it was nice.
All right, we have to go into executive session now, so I apologize if everybody's waiting for other items on the agenda. Just start reading.
Madam Chair, real, real quickly, can I please ask to table miscellaneous item J4 to the next commission meeting?
Yes, I have a motion to table item J4 by Commissioner Tabia, second by Commissioner Loeb, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Can I make another table request, then, item J6, not that I don't think it's a good idea, I had a call from Jim Barfield, and he asked Commissioner Loeb if, that you would give them all a little bit more time, because they've only had a few days to...
If, before you make a motion on that, may I? So what, what I was going to actually seek to do today, because I, I just got an email from him yesterday as well, that Fritz brought to my attention this morning at about seven, what I'd like to do, regardless of what way we go, is I'd like to get the city to at least give me their thumbs up or thumbs down on this, because it's going to disproportionately impact them. So what I'd ask, instead of continuing it, is that we direct staff to request that the city of Cocoa Beach add this on their agenda, to at least give us conceptual approval or disapproval, because if they don't want it, I don't want it, if they want it, then I want it.
My second?
All right, so I have a motion by Commissioner Loeb to direct staff to give it to Cocoa, to put on their agenda.
And I'm happy to go and present it as well, whenever they put it on.
And then we'll bring it back to the...
We're talking Cocoa Beach, right?
Cocoa Beach.
Cocoa Beach, I'm sorry. Okay, motion by Commissioner Loeb, second by Commissioner Pritchett, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, we done moving stuff around?